All right, moving on to public comments and communications. We do not have anything. So we'll move on to adopting the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda as we do have a change in the agenda or an addition. We're adding 10.3. We need to amend the minutes from the June 26th meeting.
And we've got all three of these will be from beyond what was sent out. 10, 1, 2, and 3.
Oh, okay. So 10, 1, and 2, and 3 are all from ones that were not sent out before. The 10.3, the June 26th meeting said to approve the budget, but it didn't have the long-term facility maintenance verbiage in there. The state needs that. So they aren't accepting it until that verbiage is in there. So, does anybody have any questions to the agenda? Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
No.
Scott?
Second.
Second by Lindsey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve the same sign. Let's see. We will move on to 6.1, Board Committee Reports.
I don't think we had any.
Nope, we have policy next Monday night. And your meeting really doesn't count that you ran over to the wrong site for your meeting.
Well, we just wanted to check on things.
So that doesn't matter.
We made it back in a hurry though.
Yeah, you did. But Raleigh's not as fast of a driver as you, so.
We went to speed.
Okay. So we will move on to 6.2, the middle school report.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm very long.
Oh, did you start?
I just wanted to tell you a couple things. Don't be scared. Am I good here?
You're good.
Okay. I guess the first thing I wanted to tell you about was we just came back from the Avid training. It was the last week in July, and there was, from the middle school, eight of us that went, Dana, Moffett, Barbara Woff, Leanne Gifford, Todd Ferguson, Jenny Spitzer, and Joey Alphelli, Angie Haltz, and myself. And then for the high schools, Perry Yerkeson, Jessica Winters, Krista, Hannah Yerkeson, and Matt Ogden. And it was just a phenomenal experience. I've gone before, so it was kind of fun to watch the people that hadn't experienced before. And it was, it really reinforced our commitment to Avid being really good for our students. So we're super excited about that. We, during that time, we learned a little bit more about Avid school-wide. So there's really two parts, well, many parts. The two parts that we're really focusing on this year is the Avid classes, the Avid seven. And then as we're researching this, we're realizing that more and more what Mrs. Moffett's been doing in her classroom is a lot with the Avid prep is. And that was really reinforced when we went over to Horizon Middle School and did a tour and a little bit of a shadow day, I suppose, with them, I'd call it. So we are changing digital literacy to the name to be Avid Prep/Tech Six. And it's just to more probably represent what we're doing in that classroom. So the content doesn't really change. It will be a little bit more aligned with the Avid prep classes. And she's excited because a lot of the curriculum that she was using before, she was pulling from different areas, and now she has actually sixth grade Avid prep curriculum that she gets to use, along with the technology and the other things that she's still going to do in there. So just wanted to give you an update on that. We, the other part that we're focusing on with Avid is making Avid school-wide. And last year, I went to the Avid implementation training. This year, I went to the Avid school-wide for leadership. And really are excited about what we're going to be doing in our classrooms next year, the things that we're going to be sharing with our staff. And I'm hoping that later, maybe January, we can come back and tell you, January, February can come back and tell you how that is going. But Avid is really school-wide. It is really a vault of students. And we're hoping to give them a lot of tools to be successful, not only in middle school, but as they go to high school, more prepared for high school, and then as they exit out of school. And a lot of it is exploring themselves in the road to work. But it's also some of those skills that maybe they don't get other places. We are focusing on that. We actually met last Thursday at Avid team for a couple hours and mapped out what we're going to be doing each month and had a lot. Mr. Teggeson, you could hear us laughing in it. We had a lot of fun. It makes learning a lot of fun for kids. And we had a lot of fun designing that timeline for our staff and students. The other big piece, I guess I wanted to share with you is the middle school has always been the school traditionally has started a little bit later than the other schools. I think the elementaries and high school either started at 8:20 or 8:25, and we started at 8:30. And we ended at 3:05, which was shorter than the high school also. So we, this year with, this past year with having six sections of sixth grade, we really missed our intervention time for students. That time when we could reteach, that time when we could pull kids that maybe had been gone or sick or missed for an activity. We really missed that time on our sixth grade schedule. And then the leadership team, we went back and looked at some data, and we could see. And one of the things that we thought really made a difference compared with the year that probably our test scores have been the highest compared to now, is we really believe that that time to reteach and reinforce concepts with kids is missing from our schedule. So we worked with Brian and also with Eileen, and we are going to start school at 8:25. And we're super excited about that by doing that and taking some minutes off between classes. Because again, remember, the sixth, seventh, eighth grade don't exchange at the same, don't transition at the same time. So we don't need as much time. We're going to, for some of the grades, we're going to pull some minutes off that. And then a little bit before and after lunch, that transition time, we had some extra time built in that we thought that now that we understand a little bit more how to move our computers and things, that we could pull that. So with the five minutes and some of those other minutes, and going down to 46 minutes, which we were 47 last year, in our classroom time, we're able to get that intervention time back. And we are excited about that. For Bussie, Mr. Teggeson can talk about this too. Eileen doesn't think there'll be changes for that, maybe tightening up a little bit, but not changes for that. So there shouldn't affect. We'll see. We'll have to reevaluate things as, but can't really judge by the first month because it's always busy. With time is not always reflective of what the rest of the year will be, but we will be reevaluating that. So our first bell will ring at 8:15, which is the same as it is, I think, at the high school. And then you start class at 8:20?
8:20.
Yep. And we'll give our kids a little bit more time to get ready for the day. We'll start at 8:25. Other than that, we have just been busy planning, getting ready for the new synergy, looking in that system, scheduling. It's been a busy summer, but a good summer. You have any questions for me? I don't want to take up too much of your time on your busy nights.
How long is the intervention time again? Is that the 15 minutes it used to be?
It's going to be a little bit longer. It's different for each grade level. Like for sixth grade, we're able to get 25 minutes. For seventh grade, you're making me do math now.
No, that's okay.
Sorry to everybody. 22 minutes. And for eighth grade, it will be 23 minutes.
Okay. So that's kind of like the rebel, it used to be rebel power hour.
Yeah. So what we used to do is we used to have a schedule where in this case, one day a week where maybe math could select certain kids that they thought weren't getting a concept on. Maybe they're getting an A in the class, but they're not understanding a certain concept. And we would make priority lists. And that year was probably the year that we ran it the best, and we want to go back to that. We're tweaking it a little bit to do two subjects, except for math. Couple subjects will share days so that we can do some other things during that time too. Our goal would be at some point to have enrichment time during that too. We're getting there. Just a little bit to get all that implemented.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If you hear anything, let me know.
You did a nice job getting the buy-in because it is going to be one of those things going into the winter. You know, we know if the buses come a little bit late due to weather, you know, people are going to have to just understand because it's going to be tighter.
Oh, thanks for sharing that with us. So one of the things that we built in at the beginning of the day was a five-minute, a five to seven minute check-in at the beginning of every day where we'll see if any students have, make sure they have their, everything they need to be successful. Because again, our job is to get them ready for them so that they come to their first hour class ready. And then if everything's going okay, they can do two things. They could either study for a quiz or a test, like a little bit of maybe reframing and getting ready for the day, or they can read because of our AR. Thanks for bringing that up. I'm sorry about that.
Good planning.
Moving on to 6.3, the superintendent report.
Yeah, like Heidi said, there's a lot going on right now. It's been a busy summer. We know that on the 28th, we've got operations meeting at 5 o'clock. So when we have the operations meeting, we've got to tour over at Glendon. By that point, and it's on, one of the goals we've got for the district on facilities, those of you who've gone into the capital spreadsheet in the past, you know, we've got lots of tabs for whether it be roofs, everything else. One thing we're going to do and that we'll have ready for back to school is to be able to have a shared document that will be working documents where we have for capital, and then we'll have a separate one for deferred maintenance, so those facility things. And all the things that we do on that, to make that 10-year long-term facility maintenance be a little bit more of a living document, all of that information will be put into a deferred maintenance sheet. That way, the site leaderships at the Glendon site, the site leaderships at the Dilworth, who are meeting from this point moving forward on operations, they will have all that at their disposal. So we'll have a separate type for capital. We'll have a separate, we'll have one for deferred maintenance. And we'll take all of the ideas on building expansion as a separate one. So that way, the working doc, living documents, so as the sites, departments come up with, we think we need this, this would be the most pertinent from our point of view, it's all there in those documents. So then we've also tracked that everybody has that communication, that voice within it. So that'll all be ready for the 28th. We'll run through that at operations. On the 28th at operations, we'll also, July 17th, the state came out with new long-term facility maintenance revenue projections. So we'll take that 10-year plan, and I will update that based on the new projections. Because one thing that takes place is we take, remember, where actually the documents you're going to be seeing are the fiscal year 19. Because what happens is, of course, you will be as a board approving the revenue, the levy of 17 payable 18, which then affects fiscal 19. So it's a two-year process. Okay? So that's why you're actually going to be working, we're working on a 10-year facility maintenance, long-term facility maintenance plan that says FY 19, even though you're approving it during this year. Okay? Does that make sense? Because remember, your levy is always a year out in advance. So everything that we do now is affecting what people pay in taxes in 18. And if it's calendar year 18, that's actually including fiscal year 19. So, so lots on operations. Just some updates. Room 150 is close to being, they've already been moving things, for the Dilworth site, they've been moving things in room 150. 150's in pretty good shape. This week, they will be, that should be set up by the end of this week. 114 is looking good. 110, right behind us, the special ed room, that still has one wall that has to be repainted. They still have some issues there. But again, that's on a timeline to all be done this week. They know that we've got things starting next week with new staff. So that's, that will be in place. The band room, the cabinets are in, so now it's a matter of just getting them put into place. So if you get a chance, if we've got a break between when we start the work session tonight, if you happen to take a look up in the music room in 219, you'll see that that's, that's looking pretty good. 218, where the cabinets go, the main band room, that has a lot of moving cabinets around, placing them and securing them against the walls. So that's coming into place. The one operations, the one project bathroom-wise at this site is the elementary wing, first floor, the northeast boys' bathroom, boys' and girls' bathroom. All that will be updated with new dividers and such. Some of you have seen that on the, we've had the rust in those dividers. I mean, those just need to be updated. That's being done by Comstock this week. I think the dividers came in on Friday. So that project will be ready. At the Glendon site, we're taking, one of the big issues is the freezer unit. So the freezer unit over at Glendon, we had, if you've been over in that hallway going to, over on the west side, I'm sorry, the south side of the gym, you know that we had water on that floor. So here, they had, you know, the tile had all been laxed and everything, and water all over the place. And it looks like they initially thought it was the freezer unit itself, which would be pretty spendy if we had to replace that. Dakota Refrigeration has been out a couple times. They had Comstock come out. We know that this year was, they had gone and turned that unit off to defrost it and clean it and sanitize it. So whether something happened at that time, or if there was ice, what else not, we had lots of water. And of course, there is a wall that was sheet rock wall between the freezer unit to make it look nice. But of course, that whole wall, that sheet rock, does not look as nice now because it's nice and soft, and you can put a hole right through it. And so if you've been over there, you see that there's holes all over that base. So that wall has to come down. The recommendation from both Dakota and from Comstock is to leave that, just like the other wall where it's just the freezer unit itself, so that there's, it's able to breathe, you don't have that condensation issue. So that hopefully will be a quick, reasonable, economical solution for that situation. But that one came up just last week, and that became a pretty high priority over there because if we had to tear that down, that was going to be very costly. And to not have that ready for school wouldn't have been a good thing. Right now, everything's looking good with it. It will be monitored. I believe Comstock's out this week to work on that project. So they know the timeline, and they've been, they've been very good to us as far as sticking to, to the timelines. So I think, now, as far as the Glendon site, the other thing that is getting done, the doors to the bathrooms that we can remove are all being removed. So that should all be opened up. We've got to get the ventilation still because that will help, you know, just getting some airflow. But, you know, it's, it still needs to have ventilation checked on that. And some of it, it just hadn't been done. They'd sealed it for whatever reason. So we've, we put that on their, on their list, especially the one between the media or between the lunchroom area in the center of the building, because that one's been bad before. So those doors should be off, if they're not already off today. And the other request that came out of maintenance from Tammy at that site was to put carpeting, carpeted rugs in all, in the entryways, just like door number one has. So we'll pull out what's been in there. Some of them are just tiled, which has been hard for them to upkeep. So we had our carpet installers come out, do measurements, worked with carpeting company and the maintenance department. And so the plan is that they will be putting that in also before school starts, before we have open house night. So all that should be in place. And that'll be the, the same rugs that are put in, like I said, door number one over by Transportation Community Ed Office, because that wears really well. So that is basically, and again, we'll, we'll, we'll tour that stuff on the 28th when we have the next meeting. Some of you may be aware, probably aware that Ms. Hanson has been out due to medical leave, some medical issues. I am, you know, very, you know, the, between the site leadership here, between the admin team, everybody's worked really well at, we've put together a, since we had a last year as an example, that we went through this last year with not having a lead principal to start the year. PEG will not be back to start the year. We do not know how much time she'll be gone. We've been in some communication, just trying to work through the possible timelines. It could be, it could be intermittent. It could be a set amount of time. We don't know the, and that's not under our control. Because you're talking lots of things, including Family Medical Leave Act. So there's, there's HIPAA, there's a lot of things involved with this. But what I can tell you is that between the site leadership team, they had a meeting last week, we had a meeting, Heidi, Margot, Mary Anne, I think we've got every, the whole admin team that have an action plan document. Basically, we've asked everybody, ask PEG, okay, start thinking about the tasks that you know that need to be done, and let's put together a plan. So we've got, here's the task, here's the potential solution, here's who's responsible, here's the timeline. So everybody has that as a working document. The site leadership team met last week. I brought them up to speed, the same thing that you're hearing as far as with PEG situation. I'm meeting with them again next week. We've got two hours locked in to just do final assessment, are we ready for it? And so we will just walk through, here's who is in charge, when we've got discipline things to start the year, who's going to be running the meetings. We've got to go through all of those tasks. But what I'm, what I'm feeling very comfortable with right now is that there's so many players that are all working on the same tasks, and they're adding to it. I saw over the weekend that some more tasks came up that people realized, and we knew that would happen. The closer we get, the more things people are going to remember. So I just want you to know, if you get calls or people ask the question, how are you starting the year? We're starting the year. We've got a plan in place. I think it will be smooth. And, you know, we'll, it'll be a work in progress, but we've got good people, good experience that will be able to meet those needs. Test results came out this past week, so those have been disseminated to the sites. Please know that one of the documents that you'll be getting, we're creating a template, and I'll give you, when you had your board work session, and unfortunately, we have a problem with the copy, that's why you're going to see a vertical line going through these. But this may look familiar to you because these were the goals that came out of your board work session. And so this was the stuff from Terry, Terry Quist, that summary. Well, here's what we're doing. We're taking those, we have a working document that, that we'll be utilizing, I'll be utilizing with the whole admin team. So what'll happen is, in the same way, so this is from a Google Sheet, in the same way that we've got the school district goals, what they will be doing, I'm meeting with each of the principals and the admin team over the next two days. So we have one-hour blocks of time set up so that they can add based on their site goals, if there's specific things that are in their site goals. What won't be public is the principal goals. Those are not public, just like the teacher goals, we don't put, make those public because that's part of the evaluation. But it'll be part of my stuff that in the evaluation. And I tell you this because every month, as you get reports coming in from the middle school, the elementaries, the high school, everybody will be using the same template. So as you find out on the 28th what the site goals are, just like we know the district goals, and, so all of that stuff will be disseminated on the 28th to the board and to the staff. Then each of the months that people report, not just having people come in and talking about particular programs, it will also be going back. Everybody will be using the same template that'll have the goals. So it'll include what their goals are for the sites or the district, what are the things they're working on towards those goals, and the timelines of things coming up, and then indicators of progress. So you'll see exactly what's going on at each site towards those goals. We're working on getting the goal set up this week. Lindsey, you would, which was a, it helped to have the visual on that. So Joe is working with one of our local vendors. So the goal is, by the time we have the start of the school year to begin, outside of each of the offices and at different locations, there will be, here's the district goals, here's site goals. So each of the, if Glendon-Fulton Elementary has some specific ones. For instance, we know that middle school will have something on world's best workforce associated with college and career readiness. Well, pretty good chance it's going to be Avid as one of the centerpieces because they're implementing that. And that goes hand in hand when you look at the district goal, increased student achievement through world's best workforce plan and academic programming. Well, one of the indicators of progress has got to be looking at college career readiness. So grade six through 12, in other words, the middle school and high school site, that will be one of their main goals, college career readiness. How's the indicator? Avid. Implementation of it. So we'll be getting down to each of those levels to show that we actually have alignment all the way from district to site goals through the principal goals, what they're being evaluated on. Same way for me. Okay? So we'll have all this to play out on the 28th to give to you. That's why we're doing meetings this week. Lots of one-to-one meetings to get these goals. Each of the principals have been working with their teams as far as, they all, all know that we've got these goals that we're trying to work towards and come up with what the site goals would be. So you'll be seeing this every time we have a meeting, every time we have a report, you'll see a format like this coming from the sites and from myself. Okay? What else? So there's a few things. You're going to be hearing Katie and Gail will be here tonight from MSBA. I'm wondering if they went to the Glendon site also, but we will find that out. I told them Dilworth, but I would expect them here anytime, I hope. You may have seen MSBA, and I know Katie was going to talk about tonight, the Trust Edge workshop that's coming up in, in September. So just keep that on your radar. That is one of those that's in St. Cloud. It's a Friday night, all-day Saturday workshop. So it's all about building team and trust as far as school boards. So they have a specific one on that that'll be coming up, which could be cool. And they're definitely advocating. Boundary adjustment letters went out. Actually, I think they're going out tomorrow because we had a problem with the postage machine, if I remember right. But those letters are going out to all people in the boundary area that changed school districts. So we said that we would put that out to everybody back in that July rebel news. So those are now out. Back-to-school workshop will go out tomorrow also to all employees. So we have all those plans ready to go. Let's see. The other thing we should just, we can talk about it after the meeting, but we should look at setting up confidential employee negotiations at some point so that we can get that moving forward. Because I don't want to bring those, like the technology salaries and all that, that should really, should be hitting it through the confidential. So we'll have to set up a confidential employee negotiations meeting to just talk about that at some point here soon. And that should be, any questions on the PEG situation or, like I said, you're going to be seeing all the goals. All of that should be, all of that will be presented on the 28th. All of the, on the 28th, we'll also have the breakdown of all the committees so that we've got the whole communication process on different issues, whether it be instructional or whether it be operational. So that will all be in place, including membership so that, because I want that to be able to be laid out for all staff when we have the back-to-school nights, or back-to-school meeting on the 28th. meeting on the 28th. 'Cause we're, we're breaking some of those apart to make sure that we have representation from all the pertinent groups, whether it be on instructional side or operations side, including policies. 'Cause that's one thing that we really haven't had here, is, and we really should have, when we hit those 500s and 600s in particular, to make sure that we don't run into again where the handbooks, which are board approved, and then the policies associated with those are different, as we found out. One way of making sure we don't run into that issue is to make sure that we have leadership from those sites involved in the policies. And we'll know that we've got the alignment, so. Other things, the lockers at both sites, we've, we are removing the bottoms, and I don't know if all of them will be done before the school year begins. We don't want them out and about, okay? Because they have to be able to utilize them, but I know we've ordered tops for all the ones here. Anybody who goes into the commons upstairs, you'll notice you got different heights, and some have tops, some don't have tops. So we wanna make sure we have consistency with that. The bases on some of them, you know, we've, some of them have the platform bases and what the kids do, and they kick them in. So we're taking all those off, so that all of those lockers will be exactly the same height, look the same way. It'll, it'll look better, and it's not gonna, anybody from the public that comes and sees how these are dented in, it just, it kind of doesn't look good for us as a district. So all of that should be fixed and in place by back to school night. Any questions from me? Lots of operations, no doubt. But it, right now, it looks like everything's on target.
Back to committees. DLT, had a DLT meeting. I almost totally blanked on it, oh, I started looking through my phone here on my notes. It was kinda unanimous, gotta say, I agree with it, but probably more the elementary schools are highly affected by this. Somehow, they bombed on the schedule, for lack of better terms. Ending on Thursday instead of Friday. Typically, students leave at 3:05, is that correct, on Friday? So even though elementary teachers, middle school teachers, and high school teachers can start that, you know, packing up and checking out early, you know, how often does that happen? Probably slim to none. So kinda one of the proposals there, that they talked about, which I definitely support, is Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday finals, and then having Friday as a work-in service, and provide maybe an outlook for, you know, leadership training this summer. So that was from DLT, last Wednesday.
And, and you know, this may be the, you know, the perfect year since this negotiation year, to talk about the amount of contact days compared to the total amount of days.
Yep.
You know, the 180-day contract, 173 contact, do you drop down? You know, it isn't an issue as far as whether we're that close on the amount of minutes, you know, we exceed the minutes, that isn't an issue.
Correct. So just so everybody knows, it's, it's minutes, not days, that, you know, you have to have student contact. A lot of people think it's days, but it's, it's the amount of minutes. You know, then there, there are some other opportunities that were tossed out there that day, too. You know, storm days, we all, you know, came up, well, what happens on storm days? Well, obviously, just like every other district, you'd have to add that to the tail-on, you know, at the end, of course, if you exceed the amount of allotted storm days. But one of the things they requested I bring was, you know, it's probably well in advance where a person could change that schedule, you know, ahead of time, but...
And the only thing I would, I would suggest the board is that we wait until we get through negotiations, 'cause you got time. And I say that because, you know, when you look at our schedule, it's 180 days, Morehead's, I believe, 183.
Yep.
So, you know, one thing that could be done is, is increase the amount of days, as being part of the negotiation. So again, it's not a matter about minutes.
Would that kick it then to the Monday?
Well, there's a lot of ways of going with that.
Yeah.
There's, there's, there's a lot of, because one thing that could be done is, again, that's that whole negotiation part, process, because you could also tie in, and some places do, where you have, you have days that can be done through professional development, working through site goals, that don't have to be on particular time periods.
You know, we happen to do that, and I realize there's differences, but you know, some of the pros that we talked about, too, is, you know, that morale thing. You know, if you can get your stuff done, you know, maybe you have a, there's just a ton of different things, and I'm sure that the leadership could kinda come up with that one. You know, kinda that final kickoff, if you will, and, you know, even, even discuss, you know, professional development, who's coming in the summer, so. I think there is a, like I said, I think there's a, a pretty good demand to, to consider that, with those individuals.
Yeah. You know, the, the hard part is, and again, I think it just, it's one of those things that just has to be talked about through the, you know, few meetings, because, you know, on the one hand, we tell everybody that we need as much time with kids as possible, so the idea of also taking another day away from kids, from direct instruction, you know, it's like sending out multiple messages on that. And I, I get, I'd love to be able to have a, you know, usually, we have time that we gotta make up, so we end up not having the kids there on that last day, and, and staff working on things, which works out really well. Because almost every district I've been at, we've always had one of those workshop days to end of the year, so you can work on some goal setting, so.
And I, I think we all realize, too, that it's a very tight schedule, too. You know, I mean, there's, it's months without, you know, without time off, so I mean, it's, it's not like we could steal a day here to, to make up for it, so I mean, everybody had that provision.
I think it's a goal worth looking at.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay, moving on to 7.1, the approval of the July 24th meeting. Right of motion.
So moved.
Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Bobby? Any questions? Hearing no questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to the consent agenda, under claims and accounts.
Total bills to be approved at this board meeting are $106,719.55.
All right, and a donation from the Felton Fire Department in the amount of $500 for summer rec. Approve the donation from Caulfield Studios in the amount of $500 for summer rec. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Scott? I have a second?
Second.
I did, is that okay?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's okay, yeah, totally.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Same sign. Moving on to new and unfinished business, 9.1, the student handbooks. This is the first reading of the 2017-18 K through 5, 6 through 8, and 9 through 12 student handbooks, including extracurricular handbooks.
Have all you been able to find, you all have access to that folder on handbooks? Anybody not find it? 'Cause they should all be in a 17-18, 2017-18 folder should have each of the handbooks for this year. So if, if you haven't found it, if you don't find it when you go look for it by doing a search, email me, let me know, and what I'll do is I'll kick you out of it, send you back in, and then you'll get an email saying that it's been shared with you. So that way, it's probably the easiest. I mean, I can tell you the name, but basically, what I do is give all of you access to the whole folder of handbooks, and within that handbook folder has every year of handbooks. So there's a master one just called Handbooks, and then lots of them within that, so. Otherwise, contact, you know, the principals, and, 'cause I know all the site teams have been working on, principals have been working on those handbooks, so.
All right. Do I have a motion? So moved. Amy, is there a second?
Second.
By Raleigh. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. 9.2, updated 2017-18 fees.
And there's just a couple things that were added in there, I believe it was on the early childhood, partly because no one knew which department was in charge of those fees for transportation of early childhood. So it had not been updated, according to Eileen, I think she said, since she'd been, been here. That's a while. So when you see the $15 going to 20, and you, well, it's a pretty hefty increase, it's 'cause it hasn't taken place for quite a few years. I believe that's it, the only things that were done.
Okay. I have a motion to approve this 2017-18 fees. So moved. Bobby? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lindsay. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Moving on to 9, 9.3, EMDGF grievance, 1,005. I would, a motion, I will make a motion to deny the Ed Minnesota grievance. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Was that yours?
All three of us said aye.
Okay. Okay, so that is a tie, and that does not pass.
Right. So unless, so you can either try this motion to accept, and if you get a 3-3, then that doesn't pass either. And then that means there's no action by the board.
Okay. So we will look at a motion. Do I have a motion to accept the grievance? I need a motion to accept.
Define exactly what you're talking about. Except means that we are looking at it as, okay, we need to look at it again, or...
Looking at it where, where nothing would be happening.
Leaving it as is.
No. If you, if you accept the grievance, then the disciplinary is removed. And, yeah.
But I make a motion to do that.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Aye. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
It is 3-3.
So you have no action by the board.
Moving on to 9.4, policies. Policy to approve the first reading of 503, the student attendance, that was the one that...
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Scott, is there a second?
So moved.
By Amy. Any discussion? This is the one we were just waiting from clarification. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Same sign. On 9.5, the Avid tutor compensation rate, at, looking for a motion to approve the $12 an hour rate.
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry, is that with you, Bobby?
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
By Lindsay. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Same sign. Certified contract for Emily Herman, DEMS Music, BA Step 1. Looking for approving her contract of the 17-18 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Lindsay and seconded by Scott, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Same sign. All right, I've received a letter, will I read the letter? Okay. DGF School Board members, as you are aware, I have and will continue to be unable to meet the expectations to perform duties as an active school board member for the foreseeable future. At this time, I am asking the school board to take the necessary action to create a vacancy and to fill the position for the remainder of the term, or until I am able to assume responsibilities as a member of the DGF School Board. If and when I am able to resume duties as a board member, I will provide written communication as such, knowing that the board must act through board resolution to appoint me to the school board to fulfill my term. Rich Hansen was stated today.
So based on that, it takes a resolution from the board to create the vacancy. Basically, by creating the vacancy, you're accepting that he's unable to perform it. So I've asked our school attorney to draft the resolution that is required. If you want to fill the position, they have seven board members at this time, you'd need to do it through a resolution. So you create that by resolution, and then at, at a future date, you can assign someone to the board. You wanna read the resolution so that they know what it entails, or you want me to?
Oh.
It's a long one.
Go ahead, it's a long one.
Resolution declaring board member vacancy and appointing replacement board member. Whereas board member Hanson is unable to serve on the Board of Independent School District Number 2164, Dilworth Glendon Felton District, and attends meetings for a period of not less than 90 days because of an illness or prolonged absence from the district. Whereas pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 123B, Point 09, Subdivision 3, a vacancy therefore exists in the office of the school board member with a term expiring on the first Monday in January 2019. Now therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 2164, Dilworth Glendon Felton as follows. One, a vacancy exists in the office of school board member due to member Hanson being unable to serve on the board and attends meetings for not less than 90 days because of illness or prolonged absence from the district. Two, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 123B, 09, Subdivision 4, the district will appoint an individual to fill the vacancy. The board intends to take this action at its meeting schedule for August 28, 2017, or as soon thereafter, as is practical. Three, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 123B, 09, Subdivision 4, the appointed board member will serve for the remainder of the unexpired term, or until member Hanson is able to resume duties as a member of the board, whichever occurs earlier. Four, when member Hanson is able to resume his duties as a member of the board, the board shall by resolution so determine and declare member Hanson to be again a member of the board, and that the appointed board member shall no longer be a member thereof. Motion to adopt, was seconded by. So that's the resolution, that's the process. If you want to appoint, you have to first make it vacant by resolution, and then at a future meeting, you can appoint. That help?
Just for clarification, he has 90 days to decide, or what did then, what was...
No, this, this becomes vacant as of tonight, if you, if you do the resolution. That's why you'd be able to take, take action.
He has been vacant for 90 days, so.
Yeah. So he meets the qualifiers, right now.
Yeah. I understand, I just wanted to clarify.
Yep, so you can take that action.
Okay.
I'd make a motion.
Okay, a motion by Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lindsay. Any further discussion?
Just how, how does the board now go about finding a replacement? There's no election, of course.
Interview.
Just had one, so.
That's, that's up to, and you've got that in the work session tonight, you can have a discussion about that, which is perfect timing to get this, because of the work session.
Last time, we had a, an interview, I believe, when Tracy became the community ed director, we had a few people, and then the board just votes, either in front of them or they step out. I think it was in front of them, and then it came down to a tie, so then they stepped out.
Yeah. Okay, there is a motion on the floor, and a second. Any further discussion? So, that will be a topic that we will be discussing at the work session, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? Same sign. Moving on to 11, our next policy meeting.
No, we got one more, 10.3.
10.3. Oh, sorry, that was, thank you. 10.3, we need to amend the minutes from the June 26th meeting. That did not have the verbiage in there that said to approve the world's best workforce. It's just a technicality, the state...
Not the world's best workforce.
Oh, I'm sorry, long-term facility maintenance, okay. That verbiage was not in there, the state will not accept it without that verbiage in there. So, this is just to amend the minutes that have already been approved from the June 26th meeting. So, let's see. So, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the FY '18 budget and the long-term facility maintenance, 10-year review, and expenditure projection plan. So, I'm looking for that motion. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Sure.
Go for it, Raleigh.
Raleigh, okay, and then Amy, did you want a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay, hearing no questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Same sign. And Amy, sign that. Now, we will move on to 11, the board's future agenda items. We have policy committing next Monday night, 5:30, and that is out at the high school. We have confidential negotiations that we'll kind of discuss, probably at the end of the work session, figure out what will work best as far as everybody's schedules. Operations will be Monday night before the board meeting, so that's at 5 o'clock, and then the board meeting will follow at 6 o'clock, and that is out at the high school. So, you guys were just two weeks too early to be out there tonight, so. So, okay, anything else? Okay. Meeting is adjourned, 5:53.